Starting recording. Okay, thank you. We will call the April 27th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will remind people if you happen to have a cellphone to please put it on silence. And so we will now encourage public comment during the public comment period. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Do we have any public comments in the room?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. Just want to talk about appeals as we see more licenses being noticed in the paper thanks to some efficiency in our staff, which everyone I think appreciates. With that naturally comes more appeals. So I don't know if we need maybe a refresher, maybe some real clarity on the website about what goes into an appeal, how they're conducted, and also time. As I understand it, the zoning code 17.34 covers hearings and appeals. It has a provision in there that says if the section being appealed has a different process, we can apply that process, but in the absence, this section controls. Which is, as far as I understand, none of the cultivation or any other cannabis licensing have their own appellate procedures. They say you can appeal, but I'm assuming we're operating under 1734. So a couple of things I'm seeing, because I get a lot of these appeals come to my office. I don't see anything that allows appealing anonymously. It refers to a person or an applicant. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to appeal anonymously. Ultimately, an appeal can end up in court. I'm not saying they all do or they all should, but they can. This is the beginning of administrative remedies, so they must be exhausted. So it could end up in court. You can't be anonymous in court. One shouldn't be able to appeal anonymously. Things come into consideration. Are there ex parte communications? Is the appellate an unlicensed cultivator? All these people have rights to appeal, but these are legitimate factors, not, I understand why. Oh, we don't want intimidation or something happening. We certainly don't. We have criminal statutes to take care of that. So that's one thing. Another thing is the timing. Unlike a SEQA appeal, if you appeal a project under SEQA that's been approved by a lead agency, the applicant can proceed with the approval unless you go get a separate injunction from a court to say stop the development. Now, most applicants don't, because if they lose on the SEQA, they will have expended money, but they can. Our appeals say no, once you put an appeal in, the approval is suspended. So the act of appealing until a hearing is effectively enjoining that approved activity. So I hope, and the mechanism, the 1734 is murky, murky about timing. So I'd like to have some clarity on what that timing looks like. Because, you know, an appeal filed in April that takes three months wipes out a season. So anyway, we're going to get them. That's good. That's democracy in action. I'm in favor of it. But procedure will help it go smooth. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a note to ask our director about that during our director's comments. Is there any other public comment in the room? On Zoom? I don't see any raised hands. Thank you. We will then close public comment and move on to the regular calendar. So item one, minutes, approved minutes of the March 23rd, 2023 meeting and the April 13th, 2023 regular meetings. So if I understand correctly, we need to break those ups to make sure that the commissioners who are in attendance are voting on each separate set of minutes. Okay, so first we'll take up the minutes for March 23rd, 2023. Commissioners present were Heaton, Ellis, and Sharp. Do I have a motion from one of those commissioners on the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes.
I'll second.
So a motion by Commissioner Heaton, second by Commissioner Sharp. And how did the three of you vote?
Aye.
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 I forget that thing.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes from April 13th, 2023?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Heaton. How did the three commissioners vote on the minutes for April 13?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So minutes are approved. Item two, zoning text amendment. Amend Trinity County Code, Section 17.43.050, Paragraph A, Paragraph 8, Paragraph DEV-23-01. The purpose of this agenda item is for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to adopt an ordinance amending Trinity County Code, TCC Title 17, Section 17.43.050, Paragraph A, Paragraph 8, to revise the following code section to replace the term cultivation to canopy. Staff believes that canopy was the intended term to use when verifying site compliance with the residential setback code section. No other ordinance revisions are to be considered at this time. Comprehensive ordinance amendments are still on track to be completed in 2023. Countywide review staff, Drew Plabani. So at this time, then, we will request a staff presentation. Mr. Plabani?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Drew Plabani, Trinity County Planning Department, Cannabis Division Director. Thank you for reading the project description. I guess I'll just jump into a bit of project background and then we'll go from there. So as it relates to the measuring of the setback requirement from residential structures, for approximately six years, the mature canopy was used to measure from, or the distance from the adjacent residence to the term cultivation. In early 2022, staff took note of the fact that the definition of cultivation means, and I'll read the definition for you all, the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, or processing of cannabis plants or any part thereof. One of the sort of largest tasks that we as the cannabis division have faced over the last year is the administration and ultimately, you know, the interpretation of this ordinance. Things like this have made it exceptionally difficult to administer the ordinance because there are, there's conflict between the terms in various definitions. And so, given the fact that, you know, the cannabis program, licensing program was shut down in late 2021, and one of the main, you know, public comments that I've heard for years from cultivators is this statement of, you know, the county keeps changing, moving the goalposts for us. And so from a, from the standpoint of equitable treatment, I struggle to think that it is appropriate for, after 18 months of shutdown, to hundreds of small businesses that we make an interpretation change that creates yet again, these, you know, this term of, or this concept of moving the goalposts and essentially putting people out of business for the foreseeable future, to the, to the point where this may, for many of the cultivators, impacted by this change of interpretation and by the variance concept in its totality, I think is quite a hardship. And I'm sure that many of you, I don't know, I don't know you all personally, but I would imagine that, you know, many of you are small business owners or at least firsthand know a small business owner in Trinity County. So staff has proposed a change to 1743.050, Section A8, amending essentially the term cultivation and replacing it with the term canopy. Over the last handful of months, we have done a significant amount of review across the board in the cannabis division as it relates to both the ordinance and the EIR. So we've spent quite a lot of time trying to really understand the places in which the ordinance itself creates conflict and the elements that are addressed in the EIR. And, and one of my primary goals as Division Director is to ensure that we establish and administer a functional program that creates compliance from all of the program participants. So one of, you know, I feel like we could probably have a multi-hour meeting just about odor and really take the time to take all of you commissioners through both the volumes of the EIR so that we can fully, you know, together grasp what is set forth in the final EIR and what implications that have to some of these more contentious issues. From my perspective, one of the most contentious issues is this concern of odor. And it, one of the difficulties is that essentially, these odor concerns are subjective. And so going forward into ordinance revisions, one of the goals that we have is to create a methodology by which we can quantify these odor concerns and, and then go forward with how do we establish the mitigation measures set forth in the EIR. I think that's probably enough background discussion, but I'm happy to go on. As I said, I think we could talk for hours about this topic. One thing that I do want to point out is, late last night, to the info-planning email, we received several comment letters. And in my review of these comment letters, I would like to point out to you commissioners that much of the information provided actually is related to an appeal that is pending before you all. So I would encourage us to stay away from discussing elements of the appeal and focus on the actual change that we are proposing. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
So commissioners, now is the time for technical and clarification questions. So what questions would you like to?
I have a question. Just the simplest one is, so we changed cultivation to canopy. What does that do to, just from a simple view, I'm a neighbor. Now, does this change the distance? That's going to affect whether that, that operation is going to go into place? How does that, how does that play out for the neighbor?
So as I understand our current appeals process, and, and, you know, we heard some public comment about the appeals process. One of the difficulties there is that right now, we don't have criteria to verify or qualify appeals. And so my personal opinion at this point is that the, this CCV concept that, you know, has been in place for several years, I think it had a lot of merit and function at the, you know, beginning and during the establishment of the program. But now that we have approved SEQA documents, there is the ability to appeal the project on the basis of SEQA. And, and so to your question specifically, how do I put it simply? Because really, it requires looking at quite a few things, which I'm happy to pull up on my laptop, and we can actually go through some of the items in the EIR that address this odor topic. But simply put, the outdoor canopy area is likely going to be the most difficult element to mitigate the odors from, especially for outdoor cultivation. So the change would create essentially removing the processing buildings or other outbuildings that are used for post-harvest activities, as I would describe them. One of the, one of the impacts that's identified, which is 3.3-3 in the EIR, is odor. It essentially says, and I'm trying to keep it concise for you. It essentially says that if odor concerns are lodged, let's say, then the program participant, the cultivator, would then need to comply with the odor control plan, which is a part of their approved SEQA document, and would also need to ensure that all of their outbuildings and their fully enclosed and secured structures would need to have certain physical odor mitigation controls in place. And I don't know if you'd like to go into the technical side of that.
But so does that mean that this would remove, remove buildings that are processing buildings from the setback? Does that mean that just the canopy comes into play? And they can, they could actually have a 20-foot setback on a building where they do the processing? And then on the other side is the neighbor within 40 feet? Is that, is that what it means?
I suppose that it doesn't mean that there are any particular measurements, but the?
But I mean, whatever the setback is for a building, then if this building is not the canopy, does, but it's the processing plant, that it has odor mitigation built into the structure, but not into the, but it's not, but the distance setback is no longer applicable to that? Is that what it says?
Yeah, I think you, I think you're on the right track.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the same question. So basically, there wouldn't be, there would not be a limit on the distance other than any building code, depending on the zoning, between, you know, processing, harvesting, you know, large, large building and a residential structure. Is that correct?
I think that is correct.
I have a quick question.
I interrupted.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Quick question. So for processing, depending on license type, indoor, outdoor, whatever, is there anything in the ordinance that describes what, what a processing building looks like? Is that a completely sealed building? And furthermore, packaging, is packaging a sealed building? Is there anything in our code that says when these processes happen, no matter what kind of license you have, that these buildings are actually sealed and are able to actually control it?
And I, I'd have to pull up the performance standards section of the ordinance to fully confirm that with you. But I know for a fact that in the EIR itself, it states that these, what I, and so the terminology, you know, becomes difficult at times in terms of, some of the terms we're using, from my perspective, don't actually encompass the totality of some of the actions. So I think you may have sort of misrepresented somewhat what can happen on a small cultivation license as it relates to processing.
What do you mean by that?
Well, for the most part, under Trinity County Code, a processor needs a processing license. However, individual cultivators are allowed to harvest, trim, and bulk package their product. Now, as far as retail-ready packaging, it is possible for them to package into small retail-ready containers. However, I am not aware of a single cultivator in this county that does that because it's cost prohibitive, in the sense that in order to do that at the farm, the lab has to come and essentially test all of the product from that batch at the farm, and it still would then need to go through distribution to make it to a retail point of sale.
Sure. No, so let me break it down to base so I can get to my point. Base, I cut my plant down. Do I have to take that plant and hang it in an enclosed building and let it dry and provide air purification before that odor leaves? Or can I take my plant, cut it down, hang it under a shed roof, and call that good? Is there anything in our ordinance that says?
I would have to double-check the performance standards, but yes, there is something in the EIR that clearly states that those post-harvest activities should be conducted in a fully enclosed and secured structure.
With air control?
The air control comes in, in, in my reading of the EIR, when there has been an odor nuisance or the potential of odor nuisance identified.
Perfect. Thank you.
So are there other technical questions? Other clarification?
No, I think Drew answered it with the last one, that all the impacts are addressed directly in the EIR.
All right. And if, if, I don't know if now is the, the time or later during discussion, but I think there's a really important element in the EIR that I would like to share with you all. And I can either read it to you or I can pull it up on the screen. At your pleasure.
That would be good.
Now would be good, please.
Shall I pull it up on the screen?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep, so everyone
Thank you.
is on the same page.
Just give me one minute to hook up the HDMI cable. So in volume two of the FEIR, page 15, we have ES 3.2, Significant and Unavoidable Impacts and Cumulative Impacts. And I'll just go ahead and read it. "Mitigation measures have been identified in Sections 3.1 through 3.16 of this DEIR that are intended to mitigate project effects to the extent feasible. For the following environmental issue areas, one or more of the impacts are considered significant and unavoidable. That is, no feasible mitigation is available to reduce the project's impact, impacts, or the project's contribution to cumulative impacts to a less than significant level." Does, does that make sense to you all? Should I provide a little more context or go to some other sections of the EIR that also are related to odor?
Yes, so how does this relate to odor?
Well, what it's saying is that odor has been identified as a significant but unavoidable impact.
So they don't have to mitigate it if it's not feasible?
Well, I think what it's saying is that it is not entirely feasible to mitigate the odor, just as it would be with any agricultural operation.
And currently, this applies to cultivation, which includes the canopy? So currently, this would apply to processing facilities?
This applies to the totality of the odor issue.
Okay.
It, it applies to the entire
Right.
project.
So if we separate cultivation and canopy, this still applies to the harvesting, processing facility?
Correct. It applies to any and all odors generated from a cannabis cultivation site.
Thank you. Any other technical questions? I, I have a couple. Commissioners?
Go for it.
Okay, so when someone applies for a license, they define a cultivation area that includes their canopy area? Is that correct?
Yes.
And can they move plants around, but only within that defined canopy area?
So the term canopy refers to mature canopy.
I learned that the hard way, yes. Thank you.
They can have immature plants, which we could use the, or, you know, we could use the terminology immature canopy, but it would be misleading. So I won't, I won't, you know, phrase my, my response in that way. But yes, they can have immature plants that, and likely most do have immature plants that are located in, in part of their premises that is not a part of their mature canopy area. And most cultivators move immature plants into the mature canopy area prior to flowering them.
Okay, but that mature canopy area is a defined designated area. They, they can't move outside of that area, the mature plants?
The, the mature plant area is a fixed area per se. In theory, I suppose they could go through a modification process in order to, you know, after the approval of their environmental document, move the mature canopy area. And I know there's been a lot of concern expressed to the DCC from cultivators where this sort of creates a situation that is really outside of any agricultural paradigm, which in the sense that, you know, for most farmers, there's crop rotation. And, and it's not really sensible or feasible to plant in this, plant the same crop in the same area year after year. But as it relates to our program and the SEQA review process, I would agree with, with your assessment, which is that, yes, the mature canopy is, is relatively fixed.
So if they wanted to move it outside the original designated area in their original application, they would have to apply for some sort of modification? And that modification would have to meet the proposed setbacks?
Or they could apply for a CCV, I suppose.
Okay, for a variance. Okay.
And I'll use the term CCV regularly going forward because I think there's clear consensus that the terminology variance is actually an inappropriate use of the term.
Well, for our new commissioners, I'm, I'm going to use the term variance because that is what is in the ordinance.
Yep.
So I'm curious. So I know there are these proposed changes to the cannabis ordinance, and I'm wondering what that schedule is and why this isn't included in that schedule?
This topic is very much part of the revisions that we're doing. What we are hoping to present to you in terms of moving away from the misuse of the term variance, because typically a variance refers to something within a parcel, right? Or the setback and the variance refers to not meeting the, the variance refers to not meeting the setback requirement, but typically the setback is from a property line to within the parcel. So one of the thing, one of the concepts that we are looking at implementing is actually a buffer zone. And so it's very much the same as, you know, what we've been doing in terms of this 350-foot setback. It's just a more appropriate term. And essentially, the buffer would be from the cultivation or canopy or, or whatever element needs to have, you know, meet a setback requirement to the adjacent residence. And so it's sort of a minor change, but it moves us away from this confusion as it relates to state code and variances.
Well, I guess my, my question is, so why is this coming to us separately? You know, what's the urgency? Why not include it as part of the overall? So we can look at the whole thing as a, as a bigger picture?
It certainly will be included. This was an attempt, and, and the outcome of a discussion with, between staff and ad hoc to try and remedy the situation as it relates to people going on a second year of not having a cultivation license.
So could you explain that a little further? So do you have applicants who are concerned that they would not be able to obtain a variance? Because that would, that would be, that's the current route, correct?
Right, yeah. Right. Yep, absolutely. So there's sort of two, two subsets. One, in terms of the totality of the variance process and, and bringing forward these variances to the planning commission. We have one cannabis planner for the whole cannabis division. Every single variance requires a pretty significant staff report. We have tons of appeals. We have projects that have been lingering for four years. And so it's just, you know, how do we prioritize staff time? Um, so this was truly an attempt to remedy the situation. And the reason that, that we are bringing this forward to you today. Also, we sort of just were discussing this concept. Ad hoc seemed, you know, very supportive of it. So we thought we'd bring it forward for your consideration.
Um, may I add?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Ms. Headkey.
Thank you. Um. I also want to add that, like, so I, I previously was code compliance. I've worked with old code compliance. I was there since twenty eighteen. The inspectors were very much measuring from canopy. And that is what was taught. That was what was guided. So we have all of these issued licenses that have been previously issued, right? And they designed their site in that way, right? So why this is here too with urgency is that many of those people now had to apply for initial variance, which you spoke about, but we have like about a hundred and twenty variances. In, in total, we have sixty annually. Like i- it's just not feasible with the amount of staff that we have. And if we've already analyzed the site, it's already compliant with C Q A. Why add another thing that they weren't even aware of when they put in their application, right? So it's a, I just wanted to add that. But that was the, the previous interpretation and it, and it changed with more people with more detail orientedness as it should. But now they're going to be out another year.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
So I'd like to speak to that comment that you made that they, they come and they apply. And now there's a variance that they've got to get through. At what point or does staff actually address the, the actual business plan? So somebody comes to planning, so I E. I'm Walmart. Okay. I come before the planning commission and I go, I'm Walmart. I want to put my seventy thousand square foot Walmart on your sixty thousand square foot lot. Well, Walmart, I'm, I'm just saying I'm you. You only have sixty thousand square foot plot. Probably can't put a seventy thousand square foot building there. Maybe you need to redesign your business plan or find a new location that fits your business plan. Do you have that conversation with people when they come in to apply? Because to have a hundred and twenty variances.
I never encourage people to design a site that has a variance in mind. That's not sustainable.
So why would we even take their money? I guess is my point.
And a lot of these are legacy sites. Like we need to keep in mind that the program was developed to allow legacy sites that already existed. The disturbance was already there, you know, for them to come in. And that, I mean, that's one, that, yeah, that's just one piece of information I want to add.
A understanding of where this C C V concept came from. It was a me- a mechanism to enable legacy cultivators or, you know, prior to the establishment of the program to not do further environmental damage by reconfiguring their site, needing to do more clearing so that their current configuration could be approved. That's where the C C V concept came from.
Sure. And I've heard, I've heard a lot of different variations in the past three years since I've sat on this commission about where variances came from. And it, it is absolutely an issue in my mind. It's the wrong use of the word. It's the wrong tool for the job. However, I would disagree on what you guys are saying tonight, just by what I've heard so far to date. Um, and I'm, and I am a lifelong resident of Trinity County, so I, I do know our history very well. Doesn't mean I'm involved in cannabis, but I do know the history. And the way I understood variances and how they came about was to make legacy farmers like the B E. Smiths that used to live at their house and grow marijuana at their house. Be able to come into a program that was once illegal and now illegal. Well, there wasn't a whole lot of those people running around Trinity County when this ordinance was developed because nobody wanted to come out and say, hey, I'm the illegal guy. So we wanted to encourage people to do that and, and be able to keep their homes and their sites that they had growing, which made sense. And it makes sense when you hear it in that version. And when you put it in that version, it makes sense that, yeah, we should put a variance in here for those folks. But not folks going forward and certainly not five hundred license. And certainly not a variance for every commercial project that we're trying to shove into a residential neighborhood.
Commissioner Sharp, do you have a technical question in there somewhere?
No, I was actually speaking to his response
Okay, thank you.
to the question. So, a- and that is the response is that variance has been used and described to us in so many different ways, and it seems to be changing depending on the ordinance's need. And, you know, I think the base premise of the, the, the use of this and what you're speaking to technically was to keep things in harmony. Make legacy growers a place to be and not make it to where people in residential neighborhoods had a burden of commercial project right on top of them. Which seem like you need a three hundred and fifty foot setback. So how do we end up with all these licenses on residential parcels that aren't capable of handling their project?
Well, and, and that is the reason that this item is before you today.
Changing the verbiage doesn't change the impact.
Well, if you, if you'd let me finish, um, that is the reason that the item is before you today. Because many of these sites were configured previously. And they were licensed, many of them for multiple years.
Not prior to two thousand sixteen though, correct?
Well, no, there was no licensing prior to two sixteen.
But when this was written was addressing those people prior to two thousand sixteen, I E. Legacy growers.
Correct.
Okay.
And around that time, we only used, we only measured with canopy. I want to make that very clear. Like when we were telling people in the field, your site is compliant, we are measuring canopy only. Right? So now we're, we're, we're having this discussion. We're telling you what happened. And now that, and that was, that was the intent. That was always the intent because outdoor cultivation has the largest odor impacts. And now we're, we're, we're attempting to find a feasible solution to what should have been communicated early on, but it wasn't. But now we have the situation and now we're trying to figure out a, a solution to it. So I just want.
No, I fully hear that and I appreciate you guys' candid and I really do because it's honest. Um, you're saying exactly what you need and I appreciate that.
So do we have other technical questions? I, I still have some. Um, so I understand that the, um, message to the, um, farmers has changed. Um, but I'm also concerned that the message to the public is changing. So, um, my question is, um, how does this affect, um, appeals? You said you had a zillion appeals. How many appeals do you have?
I don't think I said a zillion, but, um, we have a number and I don't, I don't have that number.
Is it ten, twenty, a hundred?
There's, I know, my head gets mixed up because I know there's more coming, right? Um, I know there's four officially pending. I'm, I'm not sure if that number is actually six though.
Okay. And how would
Sounds like the right number to me.
Okay. Six is correct.
How would this ordinance change affect those appeals? My, my, just, I'm not a lawyer on T V kind of assumption is that those appeals would have been filed under the current ordinance. And so those appeals would not be resolved by this change. Does that make sense?
Yes. So to my knowledge, this change would not affect any of the appeals that we currently have.
So how does it resolve the problem?
It resolves the problem by removing what I, what I consider to be an onerous requirement and, and a, you know, another change of the goalposts. By remaining consistent with the historical trend, which was to measure the distance from the mature canopy.
But it wouldn't make the appeals go away?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So other, other technical clarification kind of questions? Mister, Mister Barrett?
It's not a question. It's more of an observation on what we're hearing from staff today. Is that there has been a problem. This is an attempt to clean up language that was erroneously put in place. I think, I think we should of course thank them for all the hard work they're doing. And as Commissioner Sharp said, thank you for bringing it to our attention and trying to address the elements in the room. But it essentially is just cleaning up the language. Like, uh, why, why move the goalposts again?
And if you'd like, I, I'd like to provide a, you know, a little bit more context to kind of the totality of this discussion, which is that essentially if we look at the definition of cultivation, it, it creates a scenario by which it, the, the way that that definition is constructed makes it so that the majority of the activities that could happen on a cultivation site are then fall under this cultivation definition. That being said, to give an example, it uses the term mature plant. By the state's definition, once you've harvested a plant, it is no longer a mature plant. It is a harvested plant. And so one of the things that we haven't addressed and is incredibly difficult or even infeasible in some scenarios to address in its totality is, do we require? A footpath plan? And how, we need to now expand our site drawings to have people identify where exactly they walk or how exactly they transport a harvested plant to an outbuilding? Or how exactly they move an immature plant to mature canopy? And the fact that this definition of cultivation in its totality, the way that it reads means that if you harvest an immature plant, which has significantly less or the potential to have significantly less odor emitting qualities, it's still captured in the same fashion as something that has ten, twenty, a hundred times more odor emitting potential, which is a fully mature plant. And so again, it's just incredibly difficult to navigate through these conflicting definitions in order to establish a consolidated, concise, you know, administer, the administration, um, administering of, of this ordinance and the E I R.
Thank you. So, um, if there aren't any other technical questions from the commissioners, we will move on to public comments. Is there a public comment in the room?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. Just want to say thanks for the shout out to B. Smith, my former client. Uh, we do miss him. True character in Trinity County. I, I, I think this is a useful adjustment of the language only for some clarity. I wish we could go back in time and change the way variances happen. And, and I wish we wouldn't even call them variances. I think they should be like a waiver of setback requirements by the director. Because th- they give the impression that, uh, over the objections of a neighbor, we are allowing this to happen. I can think of maybe three out of hundreds of opportunities for variances where one was given when somebody within that three hundred and fifty foot setback objected. Mostly this is a, a housekeeping method where you have either another grower or someone who doesn't mind, but they still have to come here. They still have to get a staff report. All that stuff has to happen and it, it really clogs up, uh, an already very busy staff and commission. To the extent this will help, I think it's great. And, and, you know, if staff says it's help, it's going to help. But that seems like a good a reason to me. I don't think we're done with the variance question with this amendment, unfortunately. But I, I, I think there's real validity in the, in the question of like, what crazy person would design a new site that requires a setback variance? Unless it was to, to their own par- parcel, which I've heard of things like that. I don't know if that's true or not. But, uh, if there is a possibility to not need a variance, I hope everybody exercises that possibility. But for people who have an established garden and, and we have considered this, sometimes the impacts of moving a garden are greater than the impact of being two hundred and eighty feet away from somebody who doesn't mind the smell of cannabis. Uh, so anyway, I, I think we should do this, but I, I do think there is more conversation regarding variances uh, that needs to happen, both, both for clarity for the cultivator's aspect and, and for neighbors' concerns. I mean, it's, it's a legitimate concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other comments in the room?
Good evening. Crystal Bell Lewiston. I, um, obviously I'm one of those that, that submitted a letter of opposition. And it isn't for any reason to deny anyone a license. My point with our opposition is that this changing the, the term in an ordinance to accommodate those previously licensed individuals to be able to go ahead and cultivate is an improper way to manage our code. There are other ways this can be accomplished. I tried to bring forth this previously with discussions. Uh, a proclamation, a declaration, something that puts all of them together and comes in front of you. And then you can say yes or no. But the issue really isn't about a variance in this. The issue is about the buffer and where that buffer happens. Um, in the site plan that I gave you, the site plan that, that staff gave you kind of missed something. They missed, well, where is the cultivation area? What are we talking about? The code says cultivation. So where is that? Um, in the site plan I showed you, I showed you where that setback is, that buffer is for the cultivation area. And as Mr. Pulboni was just discussing, you know, do we need to have a, a, a pathway defined to go from here to there within that cultivation area? No, there shouldn't be, just to make sure there's no issues that need to be mitigated within that cultivation. That is the reason why the cultivation area is indeed the basis for the buffer, the su- the setback. Because you don't, you can't control everything that's going on right on that fence line of the cultivation area. You don't know if mature canopy was just harvested and laid against the fence. And if that fence line then is right against a neighboring parcel. You know, so what, what's that impact? What's that impact? There's more impacts than odor in this. There's impacts in, you know, having all of the activity right directly next to you. And that's what the setback is for. It's a very clean thing. And, you know, I, I understand there was a misinterpretation, but that misinterpretation didn't happen in December twenty twenty. That happened in the beginning. Because, and that's exactly what December twenty twenty became. It became that point of, wait a second, things aren't happening properly here. We need to clean it up. They tried to clean it up. Well, there was a practice, but all they did was go back to the definition. The code says we have to go by the cultivation area and that's what they tried to do. But now, you know, yes, I guess it doesn't work for those prior, prior approved variants or uh, areas that, that required it. And maybe there should just, they'll be grandfathered in. I don't know. That's not my call. And I don't believe that staff's call. I believe that's your call. So to think that all of those that incorrectly did not require a variance prior to December twenty twenty.
Thank you, Crystal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, more comment from the room?
Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. Um, just again, historically Trinity County developed this ordinance beginning back late twenty fifteen, early twenty sixteen. The state final regulations did not appear until late twenty eighteen. So the, the term cultivation area, the term canopy, none of those were defined at the state level. There were, in the first year of enrollment, if I, my memory serves me correctly, there were around three hundred and eighty participants that who enrolled in the programs. There was actually a pretty good number of people that showed up. You know, could have had some more, but we got what we got. In that period of time between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, the county permitted buildings that were built specifically for the cannabis project. Because in what is now considered inside of a variance. Um, every single variance in the history of this program until, well, I don't even know that there have been anymore. So I'll go ahead and say it. Every single variance in the history of this program has been measured from what is now defined by the state as canopy. So there, this isn't changing anything. This isn't functionally changing any effect on the ground. And again, the ordinance revisions are coming up. That will be the opportunity to discuss what variances look like in the future. Today, we're deciding whether or not it's appropriate to honor the language that has, and the effect of the ordinance that has been implemented since twenty sixteen. Or do we change that and cause these cultivators who have permitted their buildings? The county permitted their buildings. the county permitted their buildings as part of their project? I'm not sure if there's litigation that can come behind that, but I imagine that there would be if you tried to tell someone like that previous incident where the gentleman had a building that was permitted by the county prior to the new definition of setback. Because what we got in 2020 was a new definition of setback. It had never been implemented that way in the history of the program. To tell that guy he's got to move, like, what was that, like a 3,400 square foot building, grade cut, move, tear down, do whatever? I, I, I just again, a little bit nervous about where the, where the county would be heading with that. I think it is extremely important to note that the EIR contains mitigation measures specific to the drying processing buildings. And if there is a problem, you will be compelled by the ord, by the EIR, which is adopted into the ordinance to mitigate that odor. The odor, odor is the impetus for variances. Order is the impetus for setbacks. If, if, if activity around a property line were to require a setback, then we would all have to reconsider how we operate on our properties in every context, in every business. I mean, I imagine people with shut, with lots and warehouses probably park their cars next to the fence line. You know, would, would we need a setback from that fence line for parking? Because that's activity. And, and if you idle a diesel gen or a truck in the morning, you're going to be kicking out a lot of fumes there.
Adrian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the room?
Hi, Marie Peterson, District One. There's a lot of talk about the rural residential neighborhoods and the impact of cannabis on them, but one area I would like to point out is post-mountain. General plan designation is rural residential. There's over 1,100 private parcels that were irresponsibly developed, county permitted back in the day, and no resources have ever been given to them. They have no utilities. It's largely been a completely unregulated place. So do you guys want to continue to regu, be able to regulate it? Or should we make it so hard and make the bar so high that we cannot regulate that place because everybody loses hope? Regulated farms have cannabis drying in shops. Unregulated farms may have cannabis drying in carports or on tarps on the ground. The more that we keep changing the rules to make it harder for the cultivators, the more the community loses hope. And it's really just abusive to the farmers that are trusting the program, just as Adrian stated. People who may have spent a hundred, couple hundred thousand dollars on a shop and were told that it was okay, it was fully permitted by the county, but now they're missing another season. Just because one word cannot be cleaned up out of the ordinance to actually meet the original intent of the ordinance. Also, I do want to point out, you know, it's always been a contentious thing, but odor doesn't stay within a 350-foot buffer. There's no magic bubble that keeps odor inside of that area. So really nitpicking, abusing the cultivators who trusted in the program just to win this 350-foot bubble against buildings that are, were already permitted by the program really doesn't seem worth it. I fully support correcting the language because it makes sense for the county. It helps the county to save face, helps to keep building the trust between the community and our leadership and our program. And these people have really hard jobs. We all do. But making their jobs harder doesn't help anybody. And making it way harder where people lose hope doesn't help anybody either. Because what will happen with the pines if all of a sudden rural residential is a huge problem and people can't have their processing building within a certain distance of their neighbor's home who also cultivates cannabis legally? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the room?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I also own a company locally, Flora, and we have, you know, many clients that are kind of caught up in this issue, around 25, actually. And it's not that these are new cannabis sites just being proposed for development. It is primarily, it's exclusively really affecting people who had licensed farms in the past. And as Ms. Headkey indicated, it was always measured from the canopy, not from these outbuildings. Now suddenly, due to kind of the inconsistencies over time and the change in definition, now you're measuring from what could be, maybe it's not even processing or harvest storage, although certainly all the comments regarding mitigation, odor mitigation control measures in enclosed structures. It could be from something where you're stirring your egg, chemical pesticides, right? I mean, it's anything related on your premises. So what this has done, and we have people sitting that were, they've been noticed for sequel compliance, right? Nobody appealed their secret determination, which includes the air quality, the odor mitigation, odor control plans. But now they've been sitting many since like last November, as far back, because it's kind of the moving forward on variances has not happened since then because of some of these questions. So they're sitting, looking at, facing a season of loss again. They've been licensed for several years. So this isn't about a new, 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 I call it, right? Coming in and saying, I don't, you know, we'll, we'll do within the 350 feet. It's about people. The consistency, I think Commissioner Barrett, your comment is perfect because in order for the county to operate as had been over time, you need that consistency. And the farmers need that as well from, from the county. If it always been from the canopy, it should be consistent to be from the canopy, regardless of, you know, now we've been umbrellaed it all under this definition of cultivation. So I would encourage you to please do move this forward. We don't want people to lose that other season because of a language nuance almost, right? And for the county to allow it to be consistent in its application of the ordinance, I think is tremendously important. You know, I think we have 400 people in secret review, but what, no, 400 people submitted sequels, maybe 130, 150 with issued permits. But if you have 120 variances, I've got 25 clients caught up in this. This doesn't include like any of the dwelling setbacks. That's the other thing. The pines was brought up that will come before you in the future, right? People are building because they have to, and they're on small parcels with another cultivator next to them. And a dwelling is now requiring a new variance for someone who's been cultivating in the program for five, six years, right? So it's not about new, new. It's really about existing farmers now being kind of treated differently because of a nuance in the definition. So I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment in the room?
Evening Commissioners, John Brower from Junction City. And going back in time, I sat as a commissioner when this originally passed and the, there was a series of compromises that were seen as accomplishing a lot of really important goals at that time. The green rush had really created a, an emergency in Trinity County. Come up with some way of regulating this in a way that is feasible for folks and to keep it small and protect neighborhoods by keeping it out of residential zoning, but only, but allowing it in rural residential zoning and things like that. And one, the compromises when it's something like this, that if we're going to, how do we deal with places, for example, like the pines? And where it should be allowed and, and there are these pre-existing neighborhoods where it's really not a problem, but you still need some means of having a setback. So it was determined that 350 feet from a permitted residential structure, okay? Well, that mostly made sense and passed. And then, and then it was a matter of, well, but what if it's your brother's place and he's also a grower, right? And doesn't have a problem with it. Oh, very well. Maybe there should be a variance or waiver available in those cases, especially if neighbor doesn't have a problem with it. And, and even though this is a ministerial permit up to 10,000 square feet, which was seen as very small and low impact at that point. And, and the state program hadn't even been talked about yet. Then the next kind of compromise was, well, if, if you're going to have it available in rural residential and within 350 feet possibly, well, then some neighborhoods should be able to just opt out entirely. That's done. That doesn't fit some neighborhoods of Trinity County. So that became the opt-out zones to help mitigate the reduced setbacks in the rural residential. So now we have vast areas of the county that have opted out entirely. And as the setback to the permitted residential structure with a possible variance that is discretionary, but, but ancillary to this otherwise ministerial permit, okay, with certain neighborhoods being able to opt out. And then the final layer that got put on top was, and every license has to have a permitted residential structure. And that helped ensure that it was people that are living in the community, part of the community, not just inundated by outsiders. It really helped blunt the onslaught of the green rush at that time. It also kicked off a real building boom in the county and a transition from unpermitted
Thank you, John.
to permitted residences that are safer for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brower. So any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Jennifer Hill? Jennifer? Hello, can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Yeah, we've got you.
I apologize. Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to talk for a moment to please adopt this new ordinance. Let the Board of Supervisors know that we need to adopt this quickly. We need to speed up this variance process. Sounds like the workload would be near impossible to hear 120 different people coming before you. I would be one of them. This can free up a lot of resources for other projects. Something needs to be done about the variance process so it can be more efficient for the farmers, so we aren't out of work. Because without this, we can't farm. Very, very important to me and my livelihood and to my family to actually be able to run my farm. To clarify, we didn't have a license last year because of the lawsuit, so that would be two years in a row. I personally have been waiting for, since wintertime for an answer to no avail. I was caught in between this November when they stopped and December when they, you know, told me I needed a variance. So I turned in my packet, my associated fee, and I've literally been emailing Bella every single day for months up until this exact point to this, for this to be brought forth. So a very thorough and in-depth path has been streamlined to you. This process has been brought forth to you today. And this simple language change can help so many. Exactly as the director said, you can appeal a sequa instead of this language that confuses us all. In my case, I need a variance from my neighbor who also has a licensed farm. I would love to see something like a free variance pass because I don't think they would want to hold up my farm, and I certainly would not want to hold up their farming. Let's get this passed today. So I can get the license I've been so patiently and desperately waiting for. Please help me run my licensed farm so I can cultivate and pay taxes and contribute to this county I adore so much. Otherwise, I'll just be running my business into the ground now for years at this point. Thank you so much to the planning department and the cannabis staff for your diligent work in creating this pathway for us that will potentially lighten your workload and get everyone licensed. It's now up to you, the commission, to help us where you can, which is here and now, and let our season start. That's why this is so important. That's why we need this passed immediately. There's no way for any of us to get a season in without this. You can't possibly hear all these 120 variances as the spring is here. Again, I urge you to adopt this and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment on Zoom? David Albies?
Good morning, Board. Dave Albies from Douglas City. I'm kind of seeing a backslide here. Those variances were put into place. I'm sorry. Is my, is my time still running?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So it's a backslide. Those variances were put into effect to protect residential neighbors, et cetera. You put a building right next to the fence line and then start processing marijuana, growing immature plants, growing them up to almost bud, taking them out means that they can extend that 25,000-foot license into something gigantic. But what the problem is, and I, and I, I hear all, all of the, the folks out there and I, and I sympathize with them that are trying to do the right thing. But to allow buildings within the, the variance code also allows additional road traffic, the, all the employees that come in and off the property for multiple events, clipping, harvesting, planting. Okay, and supervisors can laugh, you know, all they want, I guess, but, or commissioners. But this is what it was put into place for, is to protect the residential areas. And I'm getting really tired of hearing rural residential is different than residential. It is not. Our, our ordinances say no commercial operations in residential areas for a reason. It's not the smell. It's not just one particular thing. It's a commercial business in a residential area. Nobody moved those areas in order to have a commercial operation to contend with. If the building's open and they're processing and there's 50 feet from somebody's living room window staring at it, I'm sure that they would appreciate that the, the past commission and Board of Supervisors ensuring that that variance and that buffer zone occurs. None of this should be occurring in rural residential. It is still residential. Nobody moved to a residential neighborhood to start a commercial business with the exception of this one. So it's, it's easy to comply. Just move the building and, and keep that within the same 25,000 square foot and keep that buffer area. The variances can be done individually. If you've got another grower going next year, that's great. Then, then the variances shouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, would you please mute your connection until you're called on? Thank you. Nancy Anderson?
Yes, hi, Nancy Anderson from Lewiston. I just want to, many of the letters that were already submitted have pretty much said what I am in support of. I'm just concerned that changing the language and cutting corners, making a permanent change to the ordinance for a temporary problem, I would just be very cautious about making a change that would take us steps back from where we've tried to get to have more balance. I don't know if there's a, can you invent a process whereby a particular license has all good, all neighbors that are okay with their setup, that they can bypass the variance process on a case-by-case basis? Because what I'm afraid is going to happen is individuals who do have extreme sensitivities to the smell. Others can smell it and not be bothered by it. Some get migraines or physical manifestations from the aromas. Those people, I think, are the ones that need the appeal process that goes along with having to have a variance. So if there was a way to do a case-by-case evaluation of each situation to, to kind of help both sides, beat up the process for those that don't have any complaints around them, but to slow it down for closer, closer situations where there are neighbors that would have a serious problem with it. I thank you for your time and for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Other public comment on Zoom? Rhoda?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I guess I'll start out with the hard stuff, but, uh, so nobody lays their harvest against the fence. Nobody is trying to put a 70,000-foot building on a 50,000-foot space. The wild exaggerations are not helpful in this process. In fact, it's really starting to seem like it's an intentional effort to refuse to understand what's actually going on. What I'm asking for tonight is to please put an end to treating cultivators like a mutant or a disease. Please stop moving the goalposts and make unbiased land use decisions. Please support staff in their efforts to clean up these types of messes and run their office and the program efficiently and effectively. This county needs this desperately right now. Thank you. This county needs this desperately right now. Thank you.
Matt Jefferson?
Uh, hi, Commissioner. I'm Matt Jefferson, Coffee Creek Trinity Center. I really just want to reiterate everything that Drew and Lisa and Adrian said. Without going on and on, they pretty much said everything I was going to say. Um, I hope that you guys can support staff's recommendations on this. I think everything that staff has said is right on point. Just to address a couple of things, when you purchase a property, you should look at what your zoning is. RR zoning allows home-based businesses. RR1 does not. Uh, rural residential allows home-based businesses. I can make and sell coffee tables. I can have wine grapes and I can sell wine. I can do all sorts of home-based businesses. To say that we can't grow a plant is just unjustified hate. You know, and when you're talking about packaging on site, you guys are kind of missing something that like, yes, I can put it into a jar that could be semi-ready for retail, but without a distribution license, I cannot test that product. I cannot have the testing facility come and test it and put the sticker on it that makes it retail-ready. It has to go to an outside facility for that to happen. So most cultivators are not doing that on site, just to say. And as people are talking about opt-out zones, I'm going to go ahead and get into that again. But, um, yeah, opting out of a neighborhood is one thing, but opting out at fifty-five percent of the county with a three-hundred-person petition is unjustified hate. Um, we have turned in a petition from our community that has the same amount of petition signatures. It does not agree that this entire area should have no pathway to legalization. It's just unjustified hate. What these, you know, this lady from Lewiston with the winery, this lady with the llama farm. This is what, farmers hating farmers? It's just, it's disgusting. It's ridiculous. We're farming. We're the driving economic force in this county. Support the farmers. Let them farm. Let them get their licenses. Stop moving the goalposts.
Thank you. Um, other comment on Zoom?
I'd like to speak, but I'm not sure how to.
You're doing it. Um, please, please go ahead. Please go ahead.
Okay, I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry I didn't make it up there, but quite honestly, for years and years, I've gone up there and watched y'all play this charade. Uh, y'all, excuse me, son. Y'all, y'all understand that you're slowly putting this out of business. We understand what's going on. When you've got the biggest water thief in the county, you, who by her own reporting used almost a million gallons of water a day, either that or committed fraud, teams up with Rick Law Letter and sends out a email to Jill Cox on how to shut down marijuana in every part of the county. That you, you, you kind of see where we're at. And this, this variance thing is just another, another hiccup to slowly drown us. Real business people have to say, are leaving the county in droves, and that's great. Y'all won. You got what you wanted. I mean, to see Sharp up there who charged ten thousand dollars for a four-hundred amp service, but if you use me, you can get an extra two hundred.
I would appreciate it if you would refrain from personal attack and, and provide comments on the ordinance.
Well, it's all related. It's one thing after another. The driving force of this ordinance is Friends of Grass Valley Creek. Friends of Grass Valley Creek. They are the biggest water thief of Grass Valley Creek in this county. It is just beyond upsetting.
Sir, um, do you have specific comments about the ordinance? We'd like to hear those.
Yes, I've got specific comments. My comment is to stop letting people influence your decisions. I mean, how much money is the county going to pay out? The farmers are sick of it, and they're starting to win lawsuits as everyone sitting at that table is very aware of. It seems to be the best business plan is to sue the county at this point. Because otherwise, they're going to choke you out and ruin you. And it's ridiculous over a quarter acre of cannabis, a quarter acre.
You, Sam, thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to, uh, the next potential commenter on Zoom.
I have no new raised hands.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to close public comments. I have two quick questions for staff. The recommendation was that we conduct a public hearing. Does this qualify as a public hearing?
To my knowledge, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Then I am going to close the public hearing, having heard public comments. I, um, have a quick question before I request a motion, which is regarding timing. If the Commission, um, makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they pass an ordinance, how long does it take to pass that ordinance? And does that, um, affect people who are looking to be able to plant this season?
My understanding is that, um, after the second reading, if it were to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, it would go into effect thirty days after the adoption.
So that would be the end of June? Because there's two board meetings in May and then thirty days to the end of June?
Be mid, mid to late June. I agree.
So does that, I'm, I'm learning always, does that, um, help people who are looking to, um, grow this season? Or is that too late?
I, I mean, I, I can't speak on behalf of, of anyone else, but, uh, certainly there would still be the ability for people to plant.
Thank you. So, okay, so then I'm going to bring this back to the Commission and, um, request a motion for us to consider. Someone would like to look at the staff recommendations and alternatives and make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I motion that the Planning Commission deny the requested modifications.
Do we have a second? I will second that for discussion. So do we?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I was talking to Director Pablani. Could I ask you to repeat your motion?
Yeah. I'll choose alternative three as a motion. The Planning Commission may deny the request of my, the Planning Commission may deny the requested modifications.
Thank you.
Um, do we have discussion on that motion? Mr. Sharp, Commissioner Sharp?
Yes. So, um, you know, I just, I go back to the, you know, for discussion purposes, the whole purpose of variances. And it, it seemed to be like a lot of people spoke of to find some tool to make this program work for everybody. For legacy growers, um, for people that bought rural residential properties with the expectation that they were living in a ru- rural residential neighborhood. I think this was a probably a compromise at best and maybe a bad decision at the time. And, and maybe it should have been left, but it wasn't. So here we are to deal with it and clean up some messes. The reason, you know, I make a motion to deny is because that's how we got here to begin with. We got here to begin with because people make decisions based on reactions and not based on time, thought, and preparation. We currently have an ad hoc meeting going on. We currently have a new plan being developed for our community and our county. I think all these questions can be straightened out and answered in a meaningful way that is thought through and has more public comment and opinion and time for everybody to have a say in this. The reality is, is pulling this out of it totally disenfranchises the people that it's there to work for, which is the people that don't necessarily want a commercial business next to their rural residential place. I fully hear the people that have issues and can't get things out, but that is not the Commission's fault nor our job. Um, our job is planning and to make sure that planning is done well. And in this case, I fully, and I'm not, you know, I don't want anybody to think I'm throwing somebody under the bus, but planning was not done in this situation. Um, or we wouldn't be hearing this stuff six years, nine years into a program. So we're left with a lot of bad choices, and somebody's obviously not going to be happy with those choices because it was a bad plan to begin with, or we wouldn't be here today. Changing it on the cuff and being knee-jerk reactionary on it is not a reason to change planning. I do hear what you're saying. I feel that it is important that we get things through, get people going if they're legal to do it. But doing it in this manner does not seem right. It doesn't seem fair to the people that don't want it next to them. Um, and this has been the bar that's been set for them as well as the growers. So this is, I mean, we say it just happened, but it just happened in twenty-twenty. It's three years ago. Okay, we've been working under this for three years. This is not new. This is, this is just now. This is not a new change. We're trying to make a change to the change. So to come out and say that this is a surprise to anybody, it doesn't hold water. These people all knew last year that they needed these variances. Our can, our, our county knew that they needed these variances. It is not our job to make sure that these get through because it's growing season. It's our job to enforce planning and not change it to make way for people to, to get what they want. We, we need to do planning. Um, and, and I think people are planning on this. I hope people are working at these workshops and, and that we're making headway on getting this stuff, you know, streamlined and made to where the county hopefully isn't facing lawsuits in the future. But I don't believe this is the way to fix it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp. Um, other discussion by Commissioners?
Oh, I have.
Commissioner Heaton?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, one of the thoughts, though, that I have is, um, remember when you and myself and Bella and Ms. Skylar went out to that, uh, lovely farm out there in Lewiston?
And we, we did. We issued a variance.
We did.
With, because we understood that that was, um, just kind of a person who deserved one.
It was. It was that, and that's, that's something that, and it was, and the lady had a beautiful, a beautiful farm. And it was like, and, um, and she was really limited where she fit along the, the river and everything else there and because of their septic system and all that. But, um, but, uh, Ms. Skylar and Ms. Bella pointed out to us that it was like at that point that it was like the, 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 they were measuring from the canopy and from the grow because they said, yes, from the, the Residence's house, who I forget his name, I forget her name. But she was, um, but I, because of directions, I ended up at his place and then got talked to him. And he was like, oh, no, I love my neighbor. I love the growing. Uh, his, I love their business. They have a wonderful farm. But anyhow, but, uh, the thing was, the offset was from his house to the canopy. And they had the processing farm in between. Not the processing, but the processing building. And it was a beautiful building as it was. And, um, and it was like, and, and so, but according to that ex- example that we had that Skylar and Ms. Bella walked us through, it was like, it was very evident that it was like, no, this is a going to the canopy and stuff that, because it was like they were saying this was, I, I don't remember the exact feet, but we'll say it was two hundred and fifty some feet to the, no, I think it's probably two hundred and eighty some feet to the canopy. And it was like, but the, the facility was a whole lot closer to the thing and, um, to the neighbor's parcel. And it was like, and so in that, in that experience that we had right there, that it was like, it was very evident if they've, if Bella and staff have always did the same, just like the, went from canopy. It was like, uh, there, I, I, I kind of have a hard time changing it. They're like, even though it said cultivation, but it was like under that, in that example right there, it was very specific that they were talking to the canopy of that area. And so I don't really have a problem of changing up the, I agree a hundred percent with Bill. That is like the very variance thing. We got to get this thing under control. But it was like, but, but to change up from the canopy on that versus the cultivation of like the building, it was like, you know, if we've been operating in it as canopy, it's like just change the verbiage to canopy. And it was like, because honestly, that one, that our lady who, that farm that we were at, she would now be totally out of compliance because her building is a lot closer.
Except she, 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 she went through the appropriate channels and applied and obtained a, a variance. So that, that is an option. But anyway, so, uh, Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you. We're, we're talking about cleaning up verbiage that has been openly talked to. It was a mistake from the start. All of the problems people have with odor are all addressed in the EIR. I quite, I will remember that lady. She actually cried when she got her, her license that night because she was so happy. Um, there is no way that I can get behind taking away someone's ability to provide for their family. What we are effectively doing is denying people the ability to pay their bills. Um, we're cleaning up the verbiage. We're not moving the goalposts. We're allowing these people to get to work, to provide for their families, to pay taxes, to be a part of the community they have fought tooth and nail for. To say that people didn't plan correctly is an insult to these farmers who have spent seven, eight years coming to these meetings and fighting and discussing and willing to be able to navigate the ever-moving goalposts. We're talking about cleaning up the verbiage. That's it. We're not, we're not changing anything.
That's not true.
I'm sorry. I was still talking. Um, and as far as, uh, variances, variances do, uh, you need to look at them for Trinity County. We don't have clear-cut pizza or, uh, squared lots. The lot lines here go everywhere. They cut this way. They do that way. If a person moves into a property that is zoned the correct way, they are a licensed grower, there is no way I can get behind something to take away someone's ability to provide for their family. Just, it's not going to happen.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, sorry for that interruption, Rory.
No problem.
Um, I, I, if I'm correct, and it, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think it's just about changing the verbiage. If that was just the case here, we, we probably wouldn't be having a discussion. Um, it, I think by changing the verbiage, we change the meat of the rule, which is that there'll be allowed cannabis facilities closer than three hundred and fifty foot to a neighboring parcel who doesn't agree with it. And just in, in the thing that we all need to remember here, okay, we don't represent one group. We represent all of Trinity County, every single citizen. So when we make decisions, it's not based on one industry or one person or one person's preference, but what all of our communities are, are entitled to have, which is a thought-out plan that represents all of them. And I believe that, you know, and again, if I'm wrong, that's fine. But the way it's written and the way everybody describes this thing coming together, and I wasn't there, so I can't say. But after hearing all these people speak, I get a gist of it. This was to protect everybody, not just the grower, but also the rural resident that was next to them. This gives them a means to say, hey, I don't want this next to me. Um, it is a controversial. It's not just putting a, some corn down or, you know, a, a typical farm. We can all say what we want, but we all know it is not a typical farm. And we have to make considerations for that. We have to keep that in mind. The rest of the country does. The rest of the counties do. We are no different. Everybody has a right to their opinion and to their, their way of life that they, that they bought and expected. And I believe these rules were put in place to protect that. And so we're not just removing verbiage. We're changing the rules.
Well.
Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you. I agree with your comment. We're not here to represent a single entity. But we are, we're losing sight of the fact that any of the odor mitig- But we are, we're losing sight of the fact that any of the odor mitigation and any of those problems that are, are associated with it are addressed in a document that is an extensive document. From a SEQA study to an EIR addresses all of this. So while I agree that we are not representing just one faction or one entity, we're losing sight of the fact that these are licensed legacy farmers. To take the goalposts and move it from them, it's not ethical. They've already jumped through all the hoops. They've already passed all the extensive tests. We're cleaning up the verbiage. And I, I agree entirely with you that we, we have to represent the community as a whole, but we're looking at people who have fought tooth and nail and jumped through all the hoops and passed all the tests to get in front of us today.
If I may, through the chair?
Mr. Poboni, yes.
I'd like to provide some clarification to, to Mr. Sharp. You stated that this change happened in 2020. And I can assure you that this change of interpretation happened a year ago in 2022. And for the first six years of the program, as Bella stated, as many people during public comments stated, the variance was measured from the mature canopy.
So could you tell us who made that change?
It was staff's interpretation.
So county staff interpreted that and adopted that change?
There was no change adopted. It was a internal change in practice. And really it was a result of the fact that we finally now have sufficient staffs.
Well, I think someone read the definition of cultivation. So the ordinance refers to cultivation within 350 feet or 500 feet. If you read the definition of cultivation, it includes the processing facilities. So to me, that's a direct line that follows. And so I don't think it's a new interpretation. I think someone just actually read the words.
We can, you know, I, I would agree with you that in terms of actually reading the letter of the ordinance, that that is the correct interpretation. My point is that it was incorrectly administered. And people in this county were given false guidance, pulled building permits for structures and are now in the situation where we've all of a sudden said, oh, and by the way, we were wrong. You are required to get a variance and we're even proposing to people that they reconfigure their sites, which actually creates significantly more environmental damage than the, you know, that configuration remaining.
So commissioners, do you have other discussion?
I, I.
Mr. Heaton, Commissioner Heaton?
One of the thoughts that, because when, under Mr. Poboni mentioning that and going back to that row in Lewiston, that farm there, they were very specific that the offset was from the canopy to the house. And if we were saying that, no, because of that, it was like, cause it was like 280 some feet roughly.
To the neighboring residence.
To the neighboring residence. But the, uh, facility for the processing and drying or the drying facility that she had was a whole lot closer to the residence than what it was. And she was asking for that, say the 75 foot variance just from the canopy. Otherwise it would have been probably, cause I don't know, roughly estimate it was probably an extra 60, 80 feet closer to the edge of the building.
So if I, if I, if I may, if I may.
Yes, Mrs. Head, Ms. Headkey, sorry.
I just, I, I feel the need to point out, I've processed the most variances out of any staff member in the history of the program. I, a- and in that process, I've seen a lot of unhappy people. I've seen issues that are not specific to one variance. And I can confidently say that those issues are more appropriately, it's more appropriate for those issues to be heard at an appeal. Right? Cause a lot of those concerns come from odor, traffic, nuisance related things that may be objective. And I just need to point out that the variance and the license go through two separate noticing requirements. So they have two separate opportunities to appeal the same project.
But is there a fee to appeal?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and, and in many cases I've seen, if you're gonna appeal the variance, you're gonna appeal the license. Right? So we're creating these two different tandem processes that really can still be handled through the appeal process that will exist. It exists now. We don't try to ignore people or cut down their input in any way. I, yeah, I just want you to know that I strongly believe that a lot of the issues that come up in variances would more appropriately be heard at an appeal. And that is this, what we're doing today does not eliminate the accessibility of an appeal.
So Commissioner Heaton?
So what you're saying are, cause from what I get, uh, reading everything, everything, we're just cleaning up the verbiage. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And it's like, so it, so it really, it doesn't affect anything else. It's just we're making it to where it's like, we're basically making it official that it's like, it's from canopy, not the drying shed or the whatever other shed that you might have on it. It's just a thing of just the verbiage is slightly being cleaned up.
If, if I may.
Yes, Director Poboni.
I, I would just wanna, I'm not sure that you're all tracking on the example that Commissioner Heaton is providing, which is that when, at the time that you, the commissioners went out to this site, the variance was measured from canopy. After this, with a more robust staff and the ability to actually do sufficient desktop review and take these measurements at, in the field to verify this project, and Bella, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that this project would now need to come before you again as an initial variance to get a variance from this outbuilding.
They already did that.
They already received one. So they were actually, uh, Danielle DeVore was the applicant and she in Lewiston was, uh, she was, she's a result of this interpretation change. That, that variance was brought forward.
So we resolved that issue with the current process?
There are a number of sites that have come before you previously as initial variances where you have approved the variance as measured from canopy. And now we will need to bring sites that have already received a variance that I'm assuming that given the fact that the variance was approved, they didn't have a contentious neighbor situation or there were no neighbors within the setback that had significant concerns. And so now we'll need to bring these projects back to you again for a new initial variance. I just wanna clarify.
Let me, let me, let me, um, try to clarify that. So if we did not approve this language today, you still have the opportunity through the larger review of the ordinance to fix that issue further down the line so that next year it's not an issue.
Agreed.
Right? So it's not a given that they're gonna have to keep coming back.
May, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, so as it relates to this concept of variance, you know, you can see we've spent an hour and a half now talking about a very minute portion of the totality of this discussion. So I would like to request or ask the commission, if you would be willing to have a meeting and for us to have an agenda item to discuss this prior to the ordinance amendments that we're going to propose. Because I think that once we actually get into the totality of the ordinance revisions, we could take up a whole evening or two evenings just discussing what we think is appropriate in terms of establishing the criteria and changing this concept so that the, the neighbors that are negatively impacted, their rights to appeal and to try to remedy that situation that they find objectionable is still maintained. So I, I don't know.
So, so just.
I'm not sure how to.
Right. We're gonna be following the Brown Act. So if you have proposed changes to the ordinance to bring to the commission for consideration, it would be agended in a, a public forum like this and that's so that everybody knows kind of what's going on.
And, and could we agendize a discussion?
Sure.
And, and would you all be willing to participate in that if, if we put that on the agenda?
That's our job.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So, um, I appreciate everybody's comments. I just wanted to clarify kind of where I'm headed, which is, you know, we, we have seen new sites requesting variances. So it's not just legacy. I mean, something like the patents had to get a, a variance from the neighbor, you know, for a medium sized grow.
That was from the property line, just to add clarity.
Right. But I mean, had to get a variance. But, um, and the, the Lewiston one, you know, she followed the procedure, which is available to current, um, license holders. I totally agree that variance is the wrong term because that's defined in the state law. And so there are criteria for issuing variances. We should have called it something else. What I am worried about is that there are kind of unintended consequences. I know you keep saying we're just cleaning up the verbiage, but you could have a pesticide storage facility uphill from a neighbor. You could have a big, you know, processing drying facility, you know, within whatever the zoning building code is adjacent to a, a residence. So I, I'm worried that we haven't really looked at that.
Pesticide would be excluded from this. Pesticide in agricultural product storage is not included in the definition of cultivation.
Okay, thank you. But I, I also really think that we should look at this in terms of the bigger rewrite of the ordinance picture. Specifically because I don't see that this is really gonna help people this growing season very much. I mean, I don't see that we can't go ahead and, you know, get whatever we're gonna do, have a public workshop, a hearing on the ordinance that you're considering and get moving on that. Get the board of supervisors, you know, moving on that. Really resolve the issue in the terms of the bigger picture. Anyway, that's my, my take on the issue. Yes, Commissioner Ellis?
So my, my concern would be, we have two terms cultivation and then we have canopy. And they have maybe been used interchangeably. But there's, there's, they're two different things, it sounds like. Right? And so my concern would be by removing cultivation and putting canopy on it, we open up another can of worms. We change, we change how everything's done. And yes, there's people that are in the process that are going to get the short end of the stick if we do that. And there's others that are gonna benefit from it. But I don't think for myself that there's clarity in that transition from that word because it's by definition, two different things being interpreted as one. So that would be my concern about saying yes to something like this at this point.
May I respond to your, to your comment?
Please.
I think you've made a, a really important point in terms of the terminology and the difference between the terminology that we use in Trinity County in our ordinance and then the terminology that's used at the state. And so related to your comments, um, I think it's important to note that the state does not use the term cultivation area. The state uses the term premises. Dur- through the scientific review process that has been established by the DCC, the, the request is that applicants provide site plans. And part of the site plan requirements as required by DCC regulations is that you identify the premises. Oftentimes in reviewing these site plans, what I've noticed is that the premises is in fact an arbitrary line that is drawn around the elements. So to then extrapolate and say, this is the cultivation area and in this area that they've had to define as premises for their state license, there are oftentimes huge portions of the parcel and of the premises that are not accessible via, you know, foot, as far as something that's actually related to the cultivation activity themselves. There can be, you know, processing here in this corner. There could be cultivation down on this corner. And they just drew a square around the totality of their parcel. And so now it's including huge amount of area that will never actually be used for cultivation. It's just an arbitrary line that relates to the premises. And so one of the things that I'm hearing is that perhaps there's this impression that we are changing something. What we are trying to do is maintain consistency in terms of the way that this measurement has been done and the, the way that this concept has been thought about from the beginning of the program.
So then it needs to be from the point, this point forward, you're saying that we don't have consistency. That consistency sounds like it's with the state and their interpretation is, or what they're using for descriptions, right? So premises, what does that define? How do they use it? And then we're not using that term at all. We're using cultivation and canopy. And, but in discussion so far, I've heard canopy and cultivation being used separate on both sides of this argument.
So that is one of the primary objectives of the ordinance revisions is to clean it up, make sure that our definitions match with the DCC's definitions, which have evolved. And in fact, we established our ordinance before the state did. So we created our own set of terms. We defined them as we saw fit. And that's one of the reasons that we are engaging in the ordinance revisions. So just to, just to clarify that, you know, the cultivation area where per Trinity County's definition as defined, defining those activities related to cultivation, if we were to utilize the map, which oftentimes have just been taken from their state submission, which they were required to go through scientific review at the state long before we were engaged in the SEQA review process in Trinity County. Many people have just utilized the arbitrary boundary that they drew on a map for the state. And so I agree that we do need to clean it up. That, that is our primary objective with the ordinance revisions.
Commissioner Barrett?
If I may, um, thank you for that, clearing up that definition. I think ultimately what it comes down to is, as Director just explained, we're aligning the two entities. In other words, the state and the county. And I think this county has been very open and clear in that there was mistakes being made. And they've said, hey, we made a mistake. We're trying to clean it up. But I, I, I think it's been broken down by Director and, and Ms. Headkey that we're not, we're not reshaping the wheel. We're not redefining it. We're just aligning the state and the county. There's no, there's no change to anything. And that, that's my interpretation of what I just heard from the director and to follow on, on your question.
I think that's the intent of what's being said, but I still think you can fall back on interpretation and until that's defined, this doesn't work. That's the problem. The problem is that the two definitions are being married and we're not going to ever have. It's still subject to interpretation.
We're still gonna need to fix things.
Clear whether, to me it's not, I'm sorry. Because I'm seeing cultivation and canopy, um, looking like two different animals.
And I also think that's probably just, um, grammatical error. You know, people just get a, hear a word and they cling to it. And it's forever been, it's canopy or cultivation. It's just an error. That's simply all it is. It's just people have heard that term for six, seven, eight, nine years and they've clung to it. No, no different than people, um, saying the word hyfe. It's not T H at the end, it's H T, but people mispronounce it. It's just one of those things. It's wrong, but people still do it. So I think it's just a matter of habit and people hearing seven, eight years worth of it and commission meetings and people talking, using the wrong term. And we ourselves have clung to it, but ultimately it's a, it's, it's been wrong from the start. It's my interpretation.
And I agree. Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, so I, I just, you wanna rebut that a little bit? If it was just changing a word, we wouldn't need to see all these variances that supposedly you're gonna come back to us for variances. Reality is, is the global template to the project. That's why if we agree or disagree, something will happen. Okay? It's not just somebody rewriting an ordinance. Something's gonna happen globally for these growers. That is why they will have to come back in front of us if we don't agree to this. And it's why they'll have to follow the ordinance if we do. Until they can come up with a better way to do this that addresses all the issues, I still think it's a nonstarter because of that, because it's not just a grammar change. I still think it's a nonstarter because of that, because it's not just a grammar change.
Well, I may.
Commissioner Barrett.
I agree with what you're saying. Why would we come back if it isn't changing it? But I believe what the county, my interpretation is, is all these people that got these, granted these variances before, were granted them under a, a term that is now going to become obsolete. So for the county to do due diligence and to match up everything, so we don't have to deal with lawsuits for the next 10 years, is we are resetting the calendar in that all the people that got a variance in the past are now under this new verbiage just coming before us again. And while I agree, it is, it does seem on the face of it that changing the verbiage is gonna make these people come back to us. But in my opinion, that's the county coming forward and saying these people in the past that had these problems were under that umbrella. Now, to align ourselves with the state, we're having an all encompassing umbrella. They're just trying to clean it up. They're trying to adhere, to toe the line and to make everything the same from uh, Trinity to Modoc to Mendocino, make it an, an even playing field for everyone. Not Trinity County where you come for your business to die. Come to Trinity County for your business to thrive.
I, I would like to add that measuring the residential setback does not exist anywhere else. That is not a traditional planning thing. You set, you measure a setback from a property line. That's a setback. You can create a buffer, buffer from other things. But having a buffer from another structure on someone else's property lends for situations like this. This is like, it, this is not a traditional thing that exists.
Well, I, I think we're all keenly aware that cannabis is not traditional. So, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
That's, I was talking about the residential setback, not.
Well, I know, but as it pertains to cannabis. So, I mean, we were fully aware of that.
Well, and those, if there are other sensitive uses, like a hog farm or something like that.
But we're not talking about a hog farm. I understand that, but we're not talking about a hog farm. We're talking about cannabis. So, it's not apples and oranges. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so um, further comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Barrett?
Not so showing why you're such an idiot.
Excuse me, this is the commissioner's time. So um, I do want to just add one last thing before I request a vote, which is if this motion passes as is. There would still be the option for variances and we would still be moving forward with amendments to the uh, ordinance that would resolve this as soon as possible.
Yep.
Commissioner Barrett?
Before we vote, is there an option for a counter motion?
Um, you can make a subsequent motion.
Yeah, can I speak?
We would vote on that first.
Go ahead.
A substitute motion or a, the wrong term.
I'll make a substitute motion that we adopt the staff regulations, or sorry, adopt the resolution stated in the staff recommendation.
And do we have a second? Discussion on the motion to adopt the staff recommendation. Which would be to adopt a resolution recommending the board of supervisors find that the amendment to chapter seventeen point four three point zero five zero, paragraph A, paragraph eight of the Trinity County Code is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. Under the general rule exemption, one five zero six one, paragraph B, paragraph three. Which exempts activities where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment and the board of supervisors approve an ordinance to amend the zoning code of the County of Trinity as identified in resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh five, zone amendment, D E V twenty-three dash zero one. Is that correct? Is that your motion?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Heaton. Any discussion on that motion?
I'm on the fence because I, I don't want to stop people either. But I don't feel comfortable that this is the right move yet.
So I don't know what to say on that because we're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote. Okay, so is this a roll call vote? Yes, okay. So we'll do the subsequent motion first. Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
No.
So I have to pull out my Rosenberg's Rule of Order. So we go back to the original motion? Yes. Okay. So the original motion was to deny the requested modifications by Commissioner Sharp, seconded by me. Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. I have three to two in favor of the alternative motion that the planning commission may deny the request modifications. Original motion, okay, thank you. I believe that closes agenda item number two. And we move on to I will say, so please proceed as, as expeditiously as possible with ordinances that would resolve this issue. Thank you.
May I ask a question? So clearly we've just established that you all want us to bring forward over a hundred variances to you this season. So would you be willing to accept some sort of batch approval process where for variances that have received no appeals and there is no neighbor complaint? That we could present batches of these variances to you? Or, and or how many variances do you think are the maximum that you would like for us to bring forward for each planning commission for the foreseeable future?
Well, I think batching probably is not a good idea based on time for public comment. Um, so I think that's probably not a good idea.
Okay.
I think.
Just procedurally, I don't know that we can do that. But we can certainly move through them as quickly as possible. We, we get it.
Do, I mean, if I may.
Yeah, Commissioner Sharp.
Do what you guys have been doing. I mean, I understand the load is a lot and the burden is high. But until, you know, in my opinion, just like what I said, until we get a good, solid plan. Putting patches and changing stuff as we go just is never a good idea. You know, so bring them forward. If there's no issues with the property, then they're gonna get passed. They'll get through. If there is, you know, and, and honestly, if people are coming to you guys with projects that don't fit the lot. Steer them away. Find a different parcel.
And just, you know, sort of as an FYI, perhaps, one of the things that we've discussed in ad hoc is that for you know, previous, for new, new licenses, let's say, so not ones that were previously approved. That I think generally the consensus is that it would be appropriate to steer them away and to not accept applications for new small cultivation licenses that don't meet the setback requirement. So I think that we all see, you know, the same issues. Um, I think that there's some difference between rural residential areas in certain parts of the county and other parts of the county in terms of you know, the totality of the concerns. But, so we'll, we'll keep bringing them and.
And yeah, I would definitely prioritize the people who are existing, you know, that that specifically have this issue.
Right, and, and this would only be for, you know, previously licensed or at least applications received. Probably, you know, at the, in twenty twenty that were never processed or folks that were previously licensed. So this would not, none of these new variances would be for new, new sites that were previously undeveloped.
Thanks, Drew.
Okay, so we will close item two and move on to planning commissioner reports. Do the commissioners have a report?
I.
Commissioner Heaton.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to just share that today, when I rolled into Weaverville, I decided to visit the dispensary that has just been established there next to the holiday market. And I didn't have my, because my son was in the car, I left my wallet and everything in the car and he had the air conditioner going. So I didn't have my wallet and ID, so I couldn't go in. But I looked through the window and it was, I was very impressed at how it was set up. And, and I got to talk with the owner for a few minutes, Ms. Melissa, and I had a delightful conversation with her and and you know what? It's a very discreet business, how she has it set up. And it's, and it was like, I was really happy and I was really encouraged by it. And it's been really well received, she's told me. And, and so I just wanted to let you all know that it's like, she said that she's generating tax revenue for the county. And so that's a good thing.
Okay, any other planning commissioner reports? Commissioner Barrett?
I don't necessarily know if it's a report, but I wanted to say thank you to the department for all the hard work they've done. I've been seeing in the paper the noticed licensed, licenses. And I wanted to say, thank you for all the hard work. It's a tough process and probably very thankful, but I definitely appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Sheriff, I may.
Commissioner Sharp.
Um, for staff, I need to have you guys schedule another architecture review committee meeting. Did you catch that? Okay, perfect. So they're needing approval on something.
Somebody have a specific project they put in? I haven't received any applications.
Yeah, it's probably coming. So it's for flower pots on the light poles for downtown.
Yeah, I was made aware of that today and I haven't seen the actual application.
That'll be coming. So just FYI. Well, now.
Yeah.
Now it knows. So. What else? Is there, has there been any follow up in regards to the old Trinity Market buildings?
The property owner lives in Reading and there doesn't seem to be any reason from staff that they would try to possess that at the county level. That's what I was told.
Could you clarify that?
The owner lives in Reading and there's no, from the building department. There's no reason why the county would try to take a building that is not viewed as um, something that is derogatory to the county or to Weaverville.
So the county doesn't think that the building is a, is a hazard in any way?
A hazard, yes, exactly.
And do we know who made that kind of conclusion?
Yeah.
The building department.
Building department, okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
So, well, I have a ton of questions for you when you get done with your director's report. So I'll just say, go for it. So we will move on to the director's report.
So the only thing I have for this meeting was to let Commissioner Heaton know that he can, you know, fill the burden off of his back a little bit because the limited density rural housing permit is going to be online tomorrow.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Department let me know that this afternoon. And I knew that you'd be excited to hear that.
So the people would be able to apply online to the building department for their permits?
Right.
Cool.
They get all the information online. Yep. Awesome.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions. So what is the status of staffing at the planning department?
Well, we have a assistant planner and we're flying the associate planner position and we receive no qualified applicants to date.
Okay. I'm, I'm very concerned that essentially the lead on interfacing with the general plan consultants is falling to, to you and to Mr. Wes Wexler.
Wexler, yes.
I mean, you guys have a lot to do already and that's a huge thing. That's the future of our county. And so I'm wondering if maybe the commissioners would also think that it would be a good idea to do something like develop a request for proposals for someone familiar with the county and with planning general plans to take that short term task on. Not to be a long term employee of the planning department, but you know, we have planners in the county that are consultants or have experience. They know Trinity County. They have done general plan work before. I'm just thinking, we, we need someone to kind of really keep an eye on the consultant.
Like John Jelisich maybe or something like.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of people, you know, we have planners, I don't know. I'm not gonna name names, but, but I, you know.
But somebody of that quality.
Yeah, you know, so would that be something that the commissioners, you know, would think would be a good idea to pursue, to try to find a consultant? You know, that we could hire for six months or something like that. Even if you get a new person, a brand, a brand new associate planner, if they're not familiar, familiar with the county. You know, I'm running into issues with the consultants where I tell them, here's what I'm hearing from my community. And they're just, they don't respond or they don't take that into consideration, you know. And so I'm, I'm looking for someone you know, that a planner type, you know, that knows what should be in a general plan to, to really be our voice. Am I making any sense?
You are.
What would you guys think?
I think the problem is, is they can't find anyone qualified that they could get to fill that position.
I can think of people that are currently consultants. I mean, you can, okay, like Kim Hunter is a consultant. She's a former planning director. Keith Groves is a former planning commissioner. Colleen Sullivan, O'Sullivan is a planner. I hate to say it, Scott White is a planner. There's just planners here that, you know, maybe we don't maybe they have personalities that make us crazy, but they know their job and they would actually potentially, you know, be able to.
Are you serious?
I'm just saying we could do a request for proposal and see what people say. I just, right now, we have a baby planner and someone who's not a planner, right? Be in our, be in our voice with the consultants. And I'm not thinking that they're listening to us.
Okay, well, first, I would say anything that you're sending in on consultants, please send to me because if they're not responding. You know, it's, it's pretty easy to send an email to say, why aren't you responding? Um, second, it's just gonna be probably a budgetary issue to actually hire someone. So I think this would be a good thing to actually take to the board of supervisors to see if they're interested in maybe funding a position because this was, this was the reason why we don't have a senior planner right now. Is because we did not have the money to even fund the position and this was decided last year. So there wasn't a position that we could fly because they didn't have the money.
Well, so is it the planning commission's responsibility to talk to the new C A O and suggest this? Or is it your responsibility as the planning director?
Yeah, I can do that. I mean.
That would, that would be.
Yeah. I mean, if that's the commission's.
Absolutely. I think there needs to be a planner liaison in between the, the people developing the plan in our community. And obviously you guys are certainly overworked and undereducated for the job as we are as well. And so I think it is probably critical to the success of our county to make sure that we have somebody at our level. Um, county level that's familiar with the county, that knows our needs, that can communicate well with the hired contractors. Like a project manager.
Yep, it's all about funding. So all I can do is ask the question.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're saving money right now, not having a associate planner, but we're not.
I brought that actually up and I was told, no, that is not saving enough money to hire someone. Because I tried to get them to do it now instead of. someone because I tried to get them to do it now instead of waiting. I was actually told that we should be able to do this come the new budget season. And I said, well, why can't we do it now? It's just a couple of months. And I was told, no.
By the new C A O?
By the interim C A O that's helping the new C A O. That's what I was told.
Okay.
But I mean, obviously.
Well, maybe the commissioners need to speak to their supervisors. Because I'm just concerned, you guys need more staff.
We do.
You know.
I agree.
Especially if you've got a hundred and twenty variances coming up. You need more staff. And if this is a short term, you know, kind of liaison kind of person, I can see they would be used there.
I may I?
Yes.
I appreciate the creative problem solving to a unique situation that we have, but it is important to realize that this is a three year plan. So you couldn't hire someone short term to do a sufficient and sustainable job.
I'm thinking until you guys get the person.
So another issue here that we're it's kind of the elephant in the room is that we're trying to replace long term staff with consultants that are worth far more than the rates that we currently pay our staff. So that's going to hit the budget harder and that's going to make it so we can't actually find those longer term people, right, that are retained and keep the institutional knowledge and make a program and a department sustainable and successful. So that's the real like that is one of many issues why you're not going to find a qualified candidate because a senior planner is one, super rare right now, and two, undervalued at its current rate in the county. So hiring someone as a consultant on an outside outside external consultant will be more expensive.
Well, I'm looking for a consultant that really knows Trinity County. I mean, not outside a.
John Jelisich helped train me, you know, like we had a little bit of overlap there, right? But and I respect him fully and wholly, but he's retired and that's a much healthier role for him and and, you know.
And and that's where he might be willing to step in for a short term versus people that don't want to apply for a long term position.
We're looking for people like us that are willing to sit here for hours and do county business for free.
Important that we have someone that sees the day to day issues too, though, like that's that's.
Well, when it comes to a general plan, a lot of that is dated, you know, just knowing the community, I think.
So we're also just trying to put a Band-Aid on a much larger issue. That's.
Yes, we are. So anyway, I I would appreciate if you would kind of walk this up the the chain and at least see what the results are. And then if the commissioners feel that this would be valuable, if you wanted to chat with your supervisor, you know, likewise, I just I'm trying to have that person now or as soon as we can while we're trying to hire the long term, get them trained up person.
May I make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
So I think that there would be significant value to having someone that understands, you know, the unique scenarios, the topography, the different communities in Trinity County as relates to general plan update. I also want to point out that from my perspective, it's quite clear that there's a nexus between economic development, planning department staff, grants, businesses, all of these things. So while I'm totally supportive of, you know, having someone that understands Trinity County, the concept of, you know, a temporary liaison. But I would ask that you commissioners advocate to your supervisor for for the fact that we absolutely need more planners. Can't do economic development in Trinity County without planning staff. We can't process grants in Trinity County for housing without planning staff. And so, you know, this six month concept to work on a multi year general plan, perhaps it has some short term value, but I think really if we can make a concerted effort to across the board, start advocating for, you know, sufficient staffing in the planning department, it's of utmost importance to our county, in my opinion. So thank you.
I agree, and I've been doing that.
So have I. I actually spent about twenty minutes with Mr. Tuttle the week before last on Saturday and as well as Supervisor Cock about your lack of staffing. So it does not fall on deaf ears. We definitely know you guys need it. We definitely are mystified why you don't have it.
Yeah.
It is a very good. Yeah.
Yeah, we've been, at least I've been doing the same thing.
Yeah.
And until until we kind of get, however, somebody that's keeping a better eye on the general plan consultants, I would really urge the commissioners to look at your general plan, your community plans, the synopsis that was distributed and get comments back to the the consultants. I mean, because they really need input from us too. So we got to do our our part.
Well, and I guess I'm completely confused about my part, honestly, when it comes to the general.
I don't know if I'm supposed to comment as a planning commissioner or as a private citizen.
I mean, I was told when I took this job that get ready because you're going to have four years of really hard work developing a general plan. And so far, the hardest thing I've had to do is listen to general plan consultants tell me what they're doing. But I have no concept of what my part is in that role. So and I doubt anybody here does either. So another staffing issue and training issue, I'm sure, but it would be good to know what our plant part in this is and when we actually get involved in this on a real level, other than just looking at stuff that's produced and making comments that aren't heard. So whoever's listening, that was for you.
Yeah. So what is the status on the training for the Brown Act by the county council? Are we going to get the same training as the board of supervisors? From the the county council?
We haven't heard back from him. And I was I even reached out again to C A O's office and county council about the resolution you've passed a couple of meetings ago for your rules and regulations because there was some concern that it needed to go to the board, but I can't actually get any confirmation to that. My interpretation of reading the ordinance is that you were to produce a set of guidelines for yourselves and which you did. But after that, I don't know. I can't get them to tell me where does this go? Or is it just, you know, kind of something you start doing?
So so the county council used to attend our meetings, at least by Zoom. So can you tell me why they stopped and how we get them back?
It's not in their contract.
It's not in their contract.
I asked that question this morning and I was told it's not in their contract to do that.
To do planning commission meetings?
To come to planning commission meetings or be on Zoom. So I told Margaret this morning that we need to adjust that contract to include that because we need a presence here.
I agree. I was very concerned at the last meeting when we were trying to figure out, you know, the protocol for voting that we were trying to call them. And and so I would like to somehow convey to the county, however, to add that to their contract that they at least attend by Zoom and are available for any legal questions that come up.
Yeah. So what I was told was they do that work pro bono. It's not in their contract. So if they're not available or they don't answer my texts or our phone calls, then well, that's that's just the way it is. They were busy at that moment. So that's why I said the contract needs to be amended.
Yeah.
So they're gonna amend that?
We're gonna amend that, absolutely.
Okay.
We, I mean, how many times have we seen that? You know, I mean, we sit here and we go, we need we need some kind of guidance.
Right.
But I didn't know that until this morning that that work wasn't even covered. That was just basically somebody deciding to answer the phone or, you know, respond to a text, but it wasn't part of a contract, which doesn't make any sense to me, but.
No, okay. Well, thank you for following up on that. I I think we need to have them available.
So Debbie, you'll follow up with the resolutions that haven't been typically when we do a resolution, what happens?
Most resolutions are to an individual product or individual.
Project.
At project, yeah. And they they just become part of that project's conditions and things. And they don't all necessarily go to the board. But there was a question by one of the supervisors that he felt that that particular one for your rules and your rules and bylaws should go to the board. So we asked, but I haven't heard back yet.
So you asked counsel?
So I've asked counsel and I have asked at the C A O's level office as well.
So one one last question. So because I got this question. So at the last meeting, we made a recommendation to the board of supervisors that they increase the height limit for R three to forty five feet. So what is the status of that? I mean.
Going to go to the board of supervisors and it's in work right now. Mitchell is preparing that for the board.
Do you have a date?
No.
No, okay. All right. Any other questions for Director Presley? No? Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Okay, then thank you very much. And I think the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work.